Good to go then, Bill? Thank you. All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Trumpo Veterans First Responder Committee on Thursday, March 27, 2025 at 7:00 PM. Can we have a roll call of participants, please, Marissa?
Ray Baldwin.
Present.
Bruce Silverstone.
Present.
Dan Sacco.
Present.
Steve Lemoine.
Here.
Michael Lombardo.
Here.
And Kevin Shively.
Here.
Preston Merritt?
I'm here.
Okay, then we have, we have a full complement. I'd like to, at this time, call for the Pledge of Allegiance. Can we stand and pledge if you have a flag near you?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States and to the republic which stands one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard?
Mr. Chairman, there are no members of the public currently in attendance.
Okay, thank you, there will close public comment. So tonight is the, is a first Zoom meeting we've had in quite a while. We have quite a few people on this Zoom call and we have a lot of business to conduct. So if you're going to speak, please identify yourself. Let me acknowledge that you're not stepping on anybody else so we can do this in an orderly fashion. The first item on our agenda is the approval of February 5, 2025, meeting minutes. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Steve Lemoine.
Steve Lemoine, and a second?
Second.
Who's that?
Preston Merritt.
Preston, please identify yourself, thank you. Is there any discussion about those minutes? My hearing them will go to a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. I think that, well, the next item on the agenda is the financial report for Maria Pyrazis. Maria did send out, I think, a financial report to everyone. She couldn't be here, but she has the budget meeting this evening. Kevin, were you going to run through the?
Yeah, I don't know if anybody had, so I'll go over what she sent me. Everybody has it, there's a cover page, I think everybody, I don't know if they do have it. Just a summary, bond 8022, budget was 200, paid 194, 191, we're about 5,800, 08 left, leaving 2K for financing costs. Steep Grant, G O 342, budget 128, we paid the 128. That's been submitted, file report to the state. HUD Grant, 750, paid 278, 169, leftover commerces for Nagy, 445, uncommitted balance of 26,179 on that HUD grant. DCE Grant, DECD, sorry, budget was 1.5 million. Paid 5,340 uncommitted, which is for the, obviously for the stick bill, 1,494,660. The HUD for the state is 1.2, that's uncommitted so far, so about 2.7 million uncommitted right now. So that's what's left for, if you guys wanted to go into detail, we have each PO, what's open. I think for Nagy, we have 26,179. Anything change or just go over that, well, I think Ray will have an answer for that. Other than that, for Wiles, we have 200. We encumbered 194, 119, so it's 5,800 there, which 2,000 for findings. So about 2.7 plus for the bill right now, until Rena divvies up some more.
Does anybody have any questions about the financials? Okay, it doesn't require a vote, but if nobody has any questions, we can move on to the next item on the agenda. Okay, the next item on our agenda is update on the federal and state grants and bonds, Rena.
Hey, thank you, let me start with the steep grant that we submitted in February. Can everyone hear me, my internet is coming up unstable?
Yes.
Okay, please let me know if you, if you can't hear me. We submitted a grant in the amount of $497,000 for steep funds. I should hear next week whether we receive the funds or not. Our delegation did do a letter of support. I believe we meet all the criteria and we're, and we should not be hung up because we've closed all of our other steep grants. They don't like to award a new one when you have one open. But in January, Maria finished closing out that old steep grant. So we should be in a position, hopefully, to receive those funds. I worked with, I think his name was Ryan, that works for Jeff and George Estrada on the budget. We kind of candidly beefed it up a bit from what we feel we need. But anyway, so stay tuned for that. As it relates to our contract that's pending for the 1.2 million, we're in the contract process. I think I mentioned before that they transferred all of the oversight of that grant from the Washington office to the Connecticut office over the last month and a half. So what we did was we had a startup conference with the Connecticut staff, just to make sure we're all on the same page. And I'm working with them on the contract now. I owe them candidly a few things, I've been busy the last few weeks, but I'll get it to them. So I just blocked out some time for next week to finish what I need to get to them. But there's still a process. But remember this, that we have in writing, we can spend those funds, the funds are allocated to us. You can spend those funds, it's not a problem because they know that their contract timeline is long. So I'll report back probably next month with some progress on the actual contract. The good news is the Washington folks were extremely difficult to deal with, not because they're not nice people, they were just inundated with these earmarks and they couldn't handle them. So what we're seeing now is that the Hartford HUD office, even though it's a federal office, right now they're intact and they are much more on top of things. Like I can actually get someone on the phone and those kinds of things. So I think we're in better shape in terms of getting our contract turned around. That's all I have to report at this point, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Does anybody have any questions, Rena? Okay, thank you, Rena, appreciate that. The next item on the agenda is the state approval update. Want to review comments and receive a update from Kevin Bova and Downs regarding our, the status of our application, our bid application with the state of Connecticut, Kevin?
Yeah, so to help Rena out, Rena came back with a few items we needed, just a little more detailed on some CHRO stuff, DEC stuff, but a little things they needed, so we added them to the bid. I did version five, gave it back to Rena. The only thing I'm waiting on that Rena needs to submit is the prevailing wage, which will come soon from, hopefully tomorrow, from Holly Carter up in the state. And I can give Rena the whole package, the Davis Bacon and others. We did put Title VI and we didn't need to put it in, but that's in the bid now too for Rena. But we, only thing we have to do afterwards for this will be the Davis Bacon wages. Other than that, we are clean, we worked out this week, we should have it to Rena, hopefully. I'm hoping tomorrow, Monday, I will be calling Hartford again. Looks good.
Ray, I have a question.
Yes, Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, Steve Lemoine, I don't know, I'm a little perplexed by the whole delay. I don't get it. We were supposed to go out, well, the bid delay. I mean, we were supposed to be in bid already and now we're talking of putting something together this coming Monday, which we're into April. I mean, this, this project just keeps getting kicked down the road and I really don't understand it. I mean, I understand what you did, I don't understand what you just explained, Kevin. Because I'm not, I'm not in your business.
I can, I can explain it if you want to give me a minute, Steve. So what happens is the DECD funding triggers a state review of the entire bid package. So we sent it up, I want to say sometime at the end of February. I don't have my dates in front of me, but it was like the end of February.
Yeah, before I left, yeah.
They had it for about, I would say, two and a half, three weeks. Then they came back with a list of things that we needed to clarify. Almost all of those things were in Kevin's front end bid that needed to be added. He needed to add certain language that was in the DECD guidelines, but we didn't have exactly their language in there. And Kevin was away and then we didn't have exactly their CHRO process. We had a CHRO process in there, but it was not the same as how they like it, basically. So, you know, Kevin, Jeff, myself and Maria got on a call, I want to say it was either yesterday or the day before, I forget, but this, within the last day or two, to explain to Kevin, like, he was worried that they were triggering more things than they were. They were not, it was once we all spoke, he understood, he put the stuff in, in the package. So I have his package back, I have the budget already, we have a Dropbox all ready to go. Kevin is waiting, they wanted the prevailing wage details now. Oftentimes Kevin has done prevailing wage on many projects. We usually do it later in the process, but they want it now. So he had to send, excuse me, I'm sorry. Excuse me, one second, he had to send everything to the state prevailing wage office and they have to issue stuff. So he just did that, I want to say, yesterday or the day before, so it takes them a couple of days. I can't send anything back to the state until I have everything that the state asked us to respond to. Once Kevin gets the prevailing wage thing, I put it in a Dropbox, we've got everything in there, we send it up. Hopefully there are no other issues with the state. Once the state gives us the okay, we can go out to bid. What Kevin was talking about, about David's Bacon and Title VI, that has nothing to do with the state review. That has to do with federal requirements when we go out to bid. So in order for us, so we didn't need that in there for the state review. But to go out to bid because we're using that 1.2 federal money in this and some other federal money, we had to include title, this Title VI language, which I gave Kevin, that we have to include Davis Bacon. That's not holding anything up, it's just he added that to the end of his chat here. But the other, the things that are, we're holding it up were the front end being revised in the prevailing wage. So this is why it took so long, Steve, because all this, you know, needs to be back to the state and it can't go up to them haphazard. You know, I get funny about that, I like everything done correctly because I got to have a good reputation with these people because they're reviewing my other grants. So I don't like things going a piecemeal, anything like that.
Is it prevailing wage available on the website?
They have, the Department of Labor has to issue a specific, like, letter type thing? Is it a letter or email memo?
It's a memo, the first eight, 10 pages on how to do it and then how to report it weekly with the schedule. And then every trade that's in there, they have the dollar amount. So I had to put in the description, what was being done, the value. There's a lot of things I had to send to them and then they put it in a nice package for us together to put it into the bid. You probably get bits and pieces off there, same with the Davis Bacon, you can if you had to, but it's, it won't be 100% on all the trades. So they take all the trades that are on there and do it. So like I said, you have two weeks, I usually get them within two, three days. If I call them, email, text, and I've done that over the last two days. I don't think, there's no reason I should get tomorrow, but I will call tomorrow if I don't have it.
Steve, you have any follow-up?
No, thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions of Kevin or Rena? Okay, hopefully you'll get out by tomorrow or Monday, correct?
Soon as Kevin gets me the prevailing wage stuff, I have it all in a Dropbox, I have the email already drafted. All I have to do is save it to the Dropbox and hit send. So I'm just waiting, whenever it's ready, it'll go.
Appreciate it, Rena, thank you, thank you for your help. Okay, next item on the agenda, Building Department Review Comments, George, you want to talk about those? George Wiles?
You're muted, George.
You're muted, yeah.
Thank you, we've, we've got the review comments from the Building Department and the Fire Marshal and we've responded to both of them. The major items have been taken care of and revised into documents distributed to our engineers. And we're just waiting, they're all done, ready to go. We sent the, the formal written replies, distributed those to, to the team, to George Estrada, Building Department, Richard Infante, the whole team. And that's, that's about it, we're in, we're in good shape and we're ready to go on our end. We did have Bill Chin's review comments that we received today. We've got our engineers taking a look at that. The only thing that jumped out at us was the HVAC remote control. So that's something we're going to take a look at and we'll get back to you as far as what's the impact on the construction documents to accommodate that. And that, that's it for the, the, the review comments.
Yeah, I want to thank Kevin Shively and Bill Chin did get together and they went, reviewed all the IT stuff and Kevin and Bill put together a list of, of items that should be separated out from our bid.
Bill put together the list, yeah.
Bill put together the list. But we separated out some of the mechanicals that have to be compatible with the town system. And maybe Kevin, you can just give a brief overview of what things you went over or if Bill's there, maybe he can go through it, whoever's comfortable doing that. Are you comfortable?
Yeah, that's fine, I, I mean, I can give you kind of a top-down overview. I mean, it's really primarily those systems that, that we have in the other building, other town buildings and things that, that primarily need to be integrated with, you know, the existing systems, which means that, you know, there are certain vendor partners and things that, that we'll need to work with. And George, you know, obviously you can work, Bill and I talked about you, you working with some of those vendors, obviously pulling some of those things out of Vision Points proposal and, and integrating them with the town systems, primarily things like the, the keying of doors and things like that, access to the buildings, obviously internet access, so that we're on the same, you know, with the, with the town network, network switches and firewalls and things like that. What is not needing to be pulled out of that and where we can actually kind of divide the, the thing, the IT and AV into kind of two separate tranches, if you will, is all of the AV stuff that really focuses on the functionality and the capabilities of the building, meaning like the, the cameras for webcasting or for video recording or things like that, the sound system, the AV system, things like that, those kind of things, I think, are still safe within the, the existing kind of proposal that, that has been put together. Those can be kind of separated out from these more kind of infrastructure type of, of applications. You mentioned the HVAC, we'll, we'll leave that, obviously, George, with you and, and them to try to figure out. There was a couple of things that, that he brought up, that Bill brought up in his list. One was the possibility of underground conduits needing to be run for, so that's something that we want to make sure is, is paid attention to as far as the, any drawings and things. And also as if we're going to, the security cameras is also part of that so that it integrates with the existing systems and also can be something that, that, you know, can be monitored, you know, by the police and everything, you know, along with other, other town facilities. And that may require possibly, Bill brought this up in our conversation as we talked to Omni Data, which is the vendor that, that provides that. They may suggest changing location, we don't know that they will, but it's possible that they may look at it and say, well, you know, it would be better for these locations and things, which would of course affect any type of drawings for wiring and things like that. So we want to make sure that that's something that we kind of keep an eye on and make sure that, that, that we're, you know, doing it to the best recommendations, the way that we've done other down facilities. Did I miss anything, Bill?
No, Bill Chin, IT Director, no, I, I think, you know, you covered it all. I think we just want to try to leverage as much of our town network equipment and systems that we can and, you know, I'll, I'll start touching base with some of those vendors, at least bring them into the loop. And George, if you'd like to meet with them as well, we can do that and we'll take the next step.
And we're going to have to get a budget so we know whether we're within our allocated amount of money for this. So the quicker we can do that, the better. But appreciate you jumping right on this, Bill and Kevin, thank you.
Yeah, and I think that's, as far as budget, I mean, I think the first step is to, you know, just start to pull out some of these numbers, right, from the, from the original Vision Press and see what we're left with there. And that way it'll give us, and then we can talk about the, you know, what that other stuff adds up to, right? I mean, we got to kind of break them up into kind of two parts.
That's going to be a bid package, Kev, that Gordon came in Vision Point when we started two weeks ago. So I don't know what's going to be in the bid if we're going to put an alternate with the cost for us and then what Dimitri and Bill need for their, and George Estrada need for their town. You know, some of, we don't have to with Omni, well, they're not on a state, but if there's a state, we don't have to use it. But if it's going to be a big package to go out simultaneously with the other one, like I said, with the AVE, whatever you guys, you and Gordon, who are putting together, you guys are going to have to look at the bid and tell us how the proposal page looks. So that's going to take some time from you and Bill and Dimitri to look at when we put it together. We're, because me and Gordon are putting that together next couple of weeks, I, I think. You know, with George too and Jeff. So that, that is a bid though, I believe, you know, that they want to go out for it, so.
Hey, Ray, can I ask a question?
Of course, yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So every time we have a meeting, and by the way, congratulations to the committee, this is five years ago, this, this month, March, we, this committee began itself. So congratulations to the committee for five years, we've almost become friends. So I hesitate even putting on the timeline out because every timeline we ever talk about just becomes like, okay, wait till next year, it's like the old Brooklyn Dodgers. My question here is this, so if I heard everything right and thank you for all the work that you guys are doing to get this stuff out, when you finally get it back to the state, we assume, if I, if I'm correct, it takes them two or three weeks to come back to us with an approval. So that would push this process, their response back to us to mid-April or so?
No, no, are you talking about the bid package that Kevin and I are resubmitting?
Yes.
Chris is not going to take that long, it won't take another two or three weeks. He's gone through most everything.
All right, so let's say.
Stuff that we have to correct is really not overly significant. If he's happy with what we resubmit to him, I don't think it's going to take too much time.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take that, I think that, so let's say April 10th. How long then, when it comes back to us, do we have before we have it ready to go to the bidding process, to go out to the public so we get the actual bid out?
We'll get the bid out, I'll, I'll answer that because we have, you're in the bidding season and everybody's been well aware of what's going on in town. So the way Rena gets it back, I get it back, you, you are correct, probably some out time, first, second week of April, back in, 22 days, we're going to go a little longer than 10 days allotted, but probably 20 days on the street. We should have it back in mid-May, third week of May, awarded, if, if all funded, if all the money's there by the end of May, first week of June?
Awarded, a contract awarded out by first week of June?
Probably, realistically.
Hey, Bill Chin, are we recording this?
Yes, sir, we are.
Thank you.
I think that's realistic, more than realistic.
Yeah, I think we're going to.
Unless we have a problem somewhere in the way, I, I don't.
2025, right, 2025? Okay, thank you.
Does any other committee members have any questions of either Kevin or Rena regarding the, this bid process or where we stand right now? Okay, that's good, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, George Wiles, regarding the water main proposed change order of $40,900. George, you want to walk us through that?
Sure, we asked Nagy Brothers to give us a proposal for tapping the existing water main in Venom Circle, excavation and backfill and the water main for the fire protection and the domestic up to and through the foundation wall, and he gave us a price of $40,900. We had that reviewed by Richard Infante, Nagy, and Downs and ourselves, our, our site engineers and ourselves. And we think that's a very reasonable price for the amount of work that needs to be done. That's, that's a couple, maybe 300 feet of, of water main. So we're, the team is recommending that the Building Committee consider approving this and that we have Nagy Brothers do it under the site contract and, and then we will take it out of the building contractors' bid documents.
Okay, so to get everybody caught up here in terms of the financing of this, currently we have $26,179.05 in HUD money that's uncommitted. In order to do this change order, we're going to need $14,720.95. I had an early conversation with Dan Sacco, he was going to talk to the folks at the VFW to see if we can't take that money from the VFW money and use it to pay for this, this change order. Dan, do you have an update on that?
Okay, sure, both commanders are fully on board, prepared to write the check today. In fact, I'd like to write it so that we can get into the March report to go to, to the state. And I don't, we don't want any holdups on our part, we want the contract moving forward. We'll write the check on the spot tonight.
Okay, okay, now I've gotten ahead of myself a little bit. So we, so the committee knows we have the financing to do this change order. Now let's have a discussion, first of all, do we have a motion to approve the change order?
I'll make that motion to approve the change.
All right, do we have a second?
I'll second Steve Lemoine.
Okay, is there any discussion about this change order and the mechanism by which we're going to pay for it?
So Ray, this is Bruce, this wasn't in the original document, we weren't planning on having a water line in the original.
No, it was in the, it was in the next contractor's bid.
Got it, okay, thank you.
What we're doing is we're, we're jumping ahead because the pricing was so good that we decided to take it out of the next bid and put it into Nagy's because it was going to be a lot, in, in the view of, of George Wiles and Downs, it was a very, very favorable rate.
Great, thank you.
Did I say that correctly, George? Did I state that correctly?
Yes, you're correct, that's a, that's a, an exceptionally good price. And I want to thank Richard Infante for making that suggestion and it proved him to be correct that Nagy Brothers' pricing is extremely competitive.
Does any other members of the committee have any questions regarding this change order? Okay, hearing them will go to a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion's approved. Are we going to have to sign that change order, George?
Yes.
Yeah, and Kevin sent me the form, now that you've approved it, I'll fill that form out and circulate it around. Also verbally notify Nagy and get him fired up, I mean, he's really anxious. I, you know what, I think he just recently took on this element and he's really itching to do this work. So I think we, we're in a good position here.
Well, I think I'm going to have to sign, physically sign that change order once you get it done.
Correct.
All right, we'll get that.
You bring it in, Ray, when you're done?
I, I'm going to bring them all in because we have to talk about.
We won't, we won't pay him until he, he does the work, is that correct or I have to pay him upfront?
No, no, you got to wait until he's done.
Yeah, right.
Well, listen, if you had it better done by June 30 because my money's running out.
All right, the next item on the agenda involves review and approval of two invoices for Nagy. One is payment number seven and the amount of $48,568.75, we'll take that one first. George, you have an explanation? George, you have an explanation for that?
Uh, yeah, that's the uh his requisition for payment for November. Uh, and he submitted these requisition for payment number seven in November and uh. He included uh some aggressive billing and we had him redo it and then uh subsequently. On the eighteen thousand dollars was paid by um the VFW, so he reworked his uh. His uh requisition for payment and then there were uh no building committee meetings that were scheduled. Uh, until he got this back to us. So uh that work has been done. Um, and um we recommend that uh he be paid.
All right, so do I have to sign that invoice?
Sure do.
Once we, once we get to, all right, who had, who had, do you have that invoice, George?
Uh, yeah, and I I emailed you a copy also, but uh I can get you a hard, another hard copy.
Yeah, let me sign the original, uh, George.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
All right, I'll get that. All right, so uh. Do we have a motion to approve that invoice? Okay, Preston, we have a second?
Second.
Who who's that, Dan?
Doug, yes, sorry.
Yeah, Dan. All right, do we have any discussion? Any members have any discussion? Okay, hearing them will go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposition? Any abstentions? No abstentions, okay. The next one involving uh Nagy is payment number eight and the amount of eleven thousand three thirty-one fifty-two. George, can you explain that one?
Yeah, that's the uh remainder of the uh of the work that uh Nagy Brothers did uh for uh the foundations. They're really a hundred percent done with all the concrete work. Uh, they're about uh seventy-five percent done. With the uh, the um, the backfilling, but they're a hundred percent done with the their base contract backfilling. So um, we're recommending a payment uh on this. I just want to make a note. This will be the last payment that we will approve until we get the the closeout drawings on the concrete foundation. Which include uh a uh an A-two survey of the foundation and the location of the anchor bolts. Um, and uh all the test reports that have been uh submitted uh all put together in one final package. Um, and we're holding uh about four, about fifteen thousand dollars for that task. So I, we're we're protected there. So we recommend uh payment on this requisition also.
Okay, uh, just so everybody knows, I was on site the this morning. Uh, they were up working during the backfilling of the foundation and they're probably, in my estimates, probably seventy-five, eighty percent. They were seventy-five, eighty percent done around uh eleven o'clock this morning. So they're they're going at it pretty good. The site is pretty cleaned up. Um, I think the next step is they'll start. They've started to clear out the area where the septic system is gonna go, so hopefully that installation will take place within the next couple of weeks as well. Right, we have a, uh, do we have a motion to approve the eleven thousand three thirty-one fifty-two? Preston, we have a second?
Second, Steve Lamore.
Steve Lamore, do we have any discussion? Hearing them will go to a vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries. Um, all right, the next item twelve has to do with invoice six oh nine two. You can take that off. That's already been taken care of and paid. Um, the next item is invoice under that, under item twelve is invoice six zero nine three. And the amount of two thousand sixty-five dollars for printing plans and specifications, a reimbursable expense. To Wiles Associates. Um, George, you wanna tell us about that?
Yeah, the uh, we have two invoices that uh that are the uh for printing. The first one is for two thousand sixty-five. The second one, which Ray will take up after this one, is three thousand four hundred and nine. And the explanation for that, they're both the same, and those are for sets of drawings and specifications. Uh, to be distributed to the Public Works Department, the Fire Marshal, uh the Building Inspector. And I believe uh we gave one copy to you, Ray, or there's one up there in Town Hall. Uh, but this is the full-size set, which includes almost, uh, I believe there's a hundred and hundred and thirty-two drawings. And the specifications are uh, the specifications are like uh four hundred and fifty pages. Uh, so that's what the uh, both of those reimbursable expenses were for those agencies to make their review.
All right, we'll take up the first one first, which is invoice number six zero nine three and the amount is two thousand sixty-five dollars. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Make a motion, Steve Lamore.
Do you have a second?
Bruce, second.
Bruce, second. Uh, any discussion?
I just have one question, uh, and that earlier a printing uh invoice came through with sales tax. There's no sales tax on that? Is there any sales tax included in that invoice?
Any.
Is there any sales tax?
We're tax exempt.
No, no, there's no sales tax on either one of those.
Okay, I don't have the invoice in front of me.
Okay, is there anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing them will go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstention? Okay, the motion carries. Uh, invoice number six zero nine seven, the amount of three thousand four oh nine. Do we have a motion to approve?
Both.
We have a second?
Second, Steve Lamore.
Steve Lamore, any discussion? Any questions? Hearing them will go to a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, thank you. Uh, item thirteen, construction progress report, updates on phase one of the project. Uh, and discussions regarding Nagy's contract, including foundation, backfilling and so forth. Uh, George Wiles and Jeff Anderson, um, I'll let you uh take this forward. George?
Okay, uh, the we we had our um. Rekick a restart meeting uh up on March twenty-first uh to get things going again. Uh, Downs had a representative there. Um, the building committee was represented, Nagy Brothers. Um, they're reenergized to uh um, to get mobilized and um finish off the work. Um, they, the only thing that they found was that the backfill that was placed there. Uh, last fall now is all wet and can't be used until it dries out. So the town has got another pile over at uh um uh. At um, the across the street.
Indian ledge, yep.
Indian ledge, I don't know why that, Indian ledge, uh, that uh is uh crushed stone, which doesn't have moisture. So the backfilling um uh, uh operations will uh will continue. Um, Nagy Brothers sent me about three emails today asking specific questions, so I know he's geared up. He's got his focus. Um, and I would say he's gonna wrap everything up in like three weeks. You know, he's talking to septic system two weeks, another week for backfill, uh, and then he'll start the uh water main. So he's in good shape out there.
So by the end of April, he should be off-site, correct?
Pretty much, you know, uh, except he still has quite a bit as far as site improvements go. Sidewalks, curbs, uh, site lighting, so he's pavement. So he's uh, he's got quite a bit of work on the site improvements, but as far as the septic system, the concrete foundations and the backfill. Uh, raising the parking lot, that all should be done uh within a month.
We won't be, we won't be paving the driveway or anything until after construction is done, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah.
Ray, I have a question.
Go ahead, go ahead, Bruce.
George, George, this is for you. Is there any uh coordination that? Will or need to take place between Nagy and the contractor that selected for everything is. You know, at all contractor do is follow, has to, all contractor has to do is follow the drawings?
Yeah, there's uh, there's quite a, there's quite a bit of coordination. Downs has been working with us to delineate that. Um, you know, we've got a whole section in the specifications called multi, multi-contracts, which explains. The responsibility of the site contract, the responsibility of the foundations, and then what's the responsibility of the um. The building contractor, so um, that's, it's always a very difficult task to put that together and we've been monitoring it. And um, you know, now we're gonna shift gears again and and um taking the. Uh, water main out of the contract of the general contractors, but I think we've got a handle on it. Um, but in, like anything else, uh, everything's great on paper until you get out in the field, then there's always. You know, gray areas that uh can be potential friction, but I think we've got a good.
So who who coordinates that? Is it uh Jeff? Is it you? Is it so that, you know, as it moves along? People aren't pointing a finger at each other. Who actually makes that, makes that coordination and the final determination of who's responsible?
Well, the uh, the the general, the building contractor will set his schedule for his work. Uh, and we'll make sure that between Downs and Wiles, that that schedule is coordinated with the Nagy schedule. So um, when they cast the schedule, the two schedules will be cast simultaneously and that's where the coordination will take place.
Yeah, thank you.
Ray, I have a question. Steve Lamore?
Yeah, Steve, go ahead.
Uh, George, get back to the uh backfilling. Uh, Kevin brought up ru- running a conduit. For security cameras and such, does that have an impact on that?
We have um, we have uh coordinated the. Conduit for the security cameras out to the light poles that are in, that our engineers have designed. Not night of night the light, but our engineers. So we show locations of 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 site lighting. And we've run conduit, empty conduit out to those poles and then it'll be up to the whoever the security vendor is, whether it's. Whoever it is will be able to run the wire in that in that conduit. So there'll be each pole, not every pole. All the poles will get one empty piece of conduit with no wire in it. And then there'll be a certain poles that will get an empty piece of conduit for the s- security cameras.
Okay, so that's being done as this backfilling is going on?
That'll be done as the, as part of the backfilling that'll be going excavation and backfilling for the site lighting. That is in the Nagy contract. What's not in the Nagy contract is the empty conduit.
Here, does anybody have any other questions? I think if there, there is a silver lining to this delay, it's that it'll allow Nagy to finish up everything he has to do onsite and get. Uh, all of, uh, most if not all of his equipment offsite, so when the new, when the big contractor comes in and starts to work, the site is clean. So uh, and the site is, from what I saw today, is pretty clean, is cleaned up pretty good right now. They just have the equipment they need to do the backfilling, so. Um, if you get a chance, you wanna take a ride up there, by all means do so. Are there any other questions? George, you have any more follow-up or update?
Um. Ray, if I could just add, add a few. Uh, first and foremost, um, you know, we're gonna start our weekly site visits with Bob Sessions, our. General Superintendent uh to write a report on our observations of what exactly Nagy is doing, so we'll do that on a weekly basis. Uh, for the point that he has left remaining until we get a general contractor on board, so we certainly can share that with the committee. Uh, in the next meeting as part of an overall monthly report. Um, I don't think there's any reason to go backwards. I think everyone, including Rena and George and Kevin, have all provided a good update on what involvement we've had over the last month. Uh, but looking forward to just supporting uh the bid process here in a week or two and and uh. Working towards getting that general contractor on board.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Ray, I got a question. So George, do we want to address the uh shoring thing that he brought up today or we want to leave that off the table?
The what thing?
The shoring cost, this.
Shoring.
Oh, the the shoring? Um, I think uh, I think uh. I think the better side of wisdom is that right now we've got an enthusiastic contractor that's energized. And is really uh.
I'm with you, I'm with you. I approve.
Working, working very hard and and I think we'll have that conversation. Uh, probably after the s- uh, septic system is installed. Um, we'll have that conversation. We've, we've got uh a good amount of money held on the retainage. In the concrete, concrete contract, plus we got the change orders, the time and material, so I think we're in a good spot for leverage, so.
Yeah, it was only six hundred dollars. I wanted to keep him happy, so I.
Yeah, and then, right, and I, and I'll, I'd like to strategize with Jeff on that one because I think he talks contractor better than I do. And uh, I think that uh, you know, I I can get out there and say, let's go left. And uh, Norm doesn't hear it. Jeff says, let's go left, and he goes, hey, it's a good idea. So uh, I I think we should take advantage of that.
At least that's moving in the right direction. And is there any update from anybody on the gas line?
We, we've got the uh, uh, we, we got the. Approval from the town to send to the gas company. Gas company won't go onsite to do an evaluation until after they got a clearance from uh the owner of the property. And that was signed off on and sent to them today, so they have that. And uh, they'll do up their plans and then it's just a matter of trying to negotiate with them as to what they are willing to give. If anything to us for this project.
Okay, okay, I just wanted to make sure it was moving forward. Okay, thank you.
No, we, we got that sign off today. Um, Jeff or or George, you have anything further?
Not I.
Jeff? I think everything's been covered. Thank you.
All right, very good. All right, uh, the next item on the agenda is update on um our pledges, donations, plaques and so forth, uh, Dan?
Okay, so let me, let me start off first by saying uh thank you to uh Downs and to Jeff Anderson, who uh I spoke this morning and they. Made a donation and then Jeff upped the donation to it become a naming right and they bought the naming right to the entrance in front of the building. So I want to say thank you to uh Jeff Down, to Jeff Anderson and Downs for their support.
Thank you.
And and um, we'll put it officially in writing as soon as we get the check, but he made a commitment. So I, I think.
In pro- in process, Dan, as of today, I promise.
All right, and and the second thing is Jeff uh, Jeff's also buying the personal plaque, so we we appreciate the support, Jeff, thank you. We uh, we glad you, we glad you're in the process. So um, overall now, we've sold twenty-five different naming rights and so that's. That's the veterans, the guys on the phone, the people going out and saying, hey, buying a naming right, that's been a process. And so I'm proud of these guys and what they've done. And that's a total of ninety-five thousand dollars in naming rights that we've created, which is um, which is a credit to the work that.
That's great.
You guys have done. And um, we have over a hundred and twenty plaques that have already been created, that are standing in my house. Alphabetical, alphabetical order, ready to go up on a wall, just waiting for the June the twenty-five building to go up, Kevin. And I have the plaques up on the wall and um, we got some more to, ready to go. The negative part of that is, I will tell you, only six number first responders. Now, I know we wrote a letter, uh, Ray, and you've.
Yeah.
Only sent it out, but there was no response to that initially, so I, it, I, from the veteran standpoint, it's taking us calling people and say, hey, you wanna get on this or not do that? So that's out there. We have um, we have seventy-five hundred dollars in individual donations. And again, that's because of word of mouth or whatever's come in. In total, we put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars into that lockbox. That nobody can touch until the day the building opens, so we made a commitment to get to where we're gonna get there. We're working, we're working on it every day, believe me, believe me, and we're gonna get there and try to get those funds there and make that thing work. So uh, the commitment we made to the town, we will keep. Um, the two things that I could use the most help on, we could, we could use the most help on is. Communication, somehow having the communication to go out to everybody. This has been word of mouth of how we pushed it ourselves. How do we get a bigger communication to people in the town and towns surrounding us that we have these plaques available? We have naming rights available and there are individual donation opportunities to go, because when we reach people, they seem to be wanting to do it. And so there has to be any communication along those lines and to let them know we we accept uh donations. The only other thing I'll tell you is trying to use those key funds that we got. We bought the military logos to go up the wall. We bought the big plaques and naming plaques and all the other stuff to go on the wall and we, and uh, we got all that stuff ordered and to use those funds to pay them out. So we're gonna be ready to go uh when it goes, but if we can do anything from a communication standpoint to let more people know this is available and out, that would be most helpful.
Yeah, and it's, I'd like to add to that, Bruce, I'd like to add to that communications portion. It's not, we have ideas on how to communicate. We need somebody doing it. It's, it's, it's work. It's a, it's a big effort to get the word out. Um, and uh, so we need some help in that vein.
Excuse me?
Help, huh, help how?
Uh, so. Uh, so some of the stuff we can write, but it needs to be disseminated. It needs to be followed up upon. It needs to be, um, you know, sent out to different organizations in the town, PTOs, PTA's, Democratic Party, Republican Party, I mean, Kewaunis, uh, Rotary Club, any, any organization needs to be, we think needs to be segmented specifically uh, with some, a letter addressed to the head of the organization and have put them filter it down to their groups.
Yeah.
So there's, so it's sending it out to those groups and then following up.
And let me, let me add a little more to that, uh, Ray. Um, Rena, I don't know how we communicate to the town like all the businesses. And I'm not looking to put more on your shoulders, believe me. I realize how much hours you put in and what you do. But like places like Old Town where we do so much support for them and everything like that, I wonder if they would be amenable to a five hundred dollar donation, know their names going on the wall. Like all the businesses in town, they might want to participate for any small amount. So we're talking about corporations, and I know you guys are going to get to that and say you're going to go up to big corporations, try to sell the big, the big room and all the other stuff. But there's so many businesses in town, do they know that there's an opportunity for them? How can we communicate to them? We can't go door to door. I don't know if there's a way to communicate.
So I do have a database of businesses and then we also break it down. Like we have our restaurants, we have commercial real estate brokers. We have it in like some categories. The problem is when I sign people up for my list, I promise we don't use it as a solicitation vehicle. Because when I first came here, I had so many complaints, like they had only a few hundred people on their list and everybody didn't want, you know, they were getting hit up for money left and right. They were using that list for solicitation. So I'm very sort of careful about it. I do think because this is a community project, um, it sits differently than just like everybody's looking for businesses to donate, donate, donate. And this is with veterans and we do have a lead up to Memorial Day and stuff. So if I, I would, I would say that I could get like a, a well-crafted, you know, Bilchens and Patty's Ablocky help get this out through our list. Uh, the problem is, the way we do it, you have to click on, you know, it comes out like as a blast. It says what it is. They have to click on it to see the full information, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, but I could get something out that way. I think that I may have an intern this summer. That's what I was going to say. Um, that could be helpful, you know, and, and so I have a, like I said, I can get it out to the, my lists. Uh, the problem is you do really have to follow up. It's, it's, it's a lot of follow-up. So one thought I had that's pretty inexpensive is Facebook advertising. And you can narrow your universe to the region here and you can narrow it by age and, and different things like that. And it's pretty inexpensive and it kinda, you can boost your post too. So if we had a well-crafted Facebook ask with a link to don't, like to donate, purchase, whatever, and tested Facebook advertising for it, it's so cheap. I've done a few, a few of them over the years. Not many because I pay for them myself, but I've boosted some of the restaurant week posts. And it really does work. I don't know Bill, if I see Bill Chin looking over, I don't know if he has any thoughts on that.
Yeah, Rena, the only thing is I'm, I'm with you all the way. I'm, I'm, and I'll do whatever we have to, we want to do. But it's, I'm not even looking for a donation. I wanted them to know that they have the availability to put their name on a wall and a building is going in town, that the veterans are building. And so they don't walk into the room and say, I didn't know I could put my name on that wall for a couple of hundred dollars.
Yeah. So whatever you want to write up, I'm just saying a good way, yeah, I mean, I think, you know, like I said, I'll do a blast to my list. I can't keep blasting it over and over. And they really do say you have to get to people, follow up a number of times. I just can't use the list for like ongoing requests for this. But I, I think doing it one time, I, I definitely could. And I can talk to Vicky and see if her, she has a list that's more like residents. Mine's more businesses and maybe the same thing that we craft, whatever it is, this one pager. Maybe she can put it out to her list as well. Um, I think that would help. You know, um,
Yeah.
But other than that, you know, it's really a lot of individual follow with the businesses. I don't know, Dan, if, if you want to come in and, or somebody wants to come in and talk to the chamber, um, you know, there's different.
I take any opportunity. We'll take any opportunity.
Yeah, so. I'm hosting the chamber meeting on July twenty-fourth, I think it is. That's a Thursday. Let me just, I'm hosting it at the library community room. It's just the chamber board, the Trumbull Chamber Board. It's usually about twenty, twenty-something people. But that's the board that's over the Trumbull Chamber. So that might be an opportunity, uh, Dan, for you to come in. You know, give the flyers out to everybody, ask them to circulate it further within their own companies.
Okay.
Uh, there's bankers there and stuff, you know, and see if, if every, everything, that might be a date. You know, we'll be right over at the Trumbull Library.
Okay, okay.
And we meet at eight thirty in the morning on that day.
Okay.
And it's only an hour long meeting, but I'm happy to make sure you're on the agenda. If you want to be on the agenda right up front, so you don't have to sit through everything, I'm happy to do that.
I'll do it any way you want to do it. And I, the hour is not a problem at all.
Yeah. And I can think of some other forums, but again, it's a lot of follow-up. Cause once you give that stuff out, you gotta really follow up with people.
Listen, we'll, we'll take any forum we can just to do it to generate the amount of money so we could run that building in the right way when it's all said and done. So.
So if you have something crafted, I don't know what, I've seen numerous things that you have.
Yeah.
But something that I can, um, blast out, um.
Okay, we, we, we did a letter that we sent to the, um, the fire department, CMS, um, and like Dan said, uh, I don't think we got much of a response back from those, um, for whatever reason. So.
Yeah, I'd like to create one that calls it opportunity. It's an opportunity. Now, we're not asking you to do anything. You don't, we're not obligating you, not asking anything. It is an opportunity if you want to take advantage of it. That's the only way I want to present it.
Yeah. All right. So maybe, Dan, you and I can follow up over the next few weeks and just talk a little more. But put July twenty-fourth down on your.
Okay.
What day is it?
I want to say it's a Thursday. Hold on one second.
July or June?
July, July twenty-fourth. It's a Thursday morning, eight thirty, Trumbull Library.
All right, I'll be there.
Hosting the chamber meeting that morning. I know I just recently scheduled it. Um, you know what would be an interesting place? Um, the Fairfield County Commercial Broker Network, I host them a few times a year. I'm going tomorrow. They're going to be in Shelton. Are you going to that, Ray?
I had planned it out. No.
Oh, so Mr. Santos hosting it tomorrow, but we host it a few times a year and it gets about seventy to ninety commercial brokers. These are people that are really active in the community. And, um, at a future meeting, I can talk to Windbomb who runs that. Maybe we can have you and Dan just to talk about this to that audience. Cause these brokers are touching all kinds of different businesses and, and people. That might be another, and they're very, very patriotic group, uh, very, and you know, like they have a guy that sings the, um, uh, National Anthem at our meetings and stuff. So they're really into, you know, patriotism.
Okay.
I can set that. Uh, I'll, I'll talk to Win on Friday and see if I can't get you on one of their upcoming agendas. And I'll think about other forums like that with business people that you can pop in and just do your spiel.
Yeah, just, just send a note. I'll promise we'll be there, we'll be there.
Yeah, we'll be there. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anything further, Dan?
No, that's it, sir.
Okay. Is there any other business to come before the committee?
Yeah, the, um, corporate and individual stuff that you were going to talk about.
Okay, yeah. One, one thing I will talk about that, uh, I do, uh, I don't want to reveal the, the name yet, but we do have a, a donor for the, the generator. So we will have the generator paid for.
Wow.
Um, and then I'd like to, when I, I'll get offline, I'll get a number on the kitchen equipment, uh, the, the work kitchen equipment, and I'll see if I can't get, uh, a combination of, uh, donors for the, all the kitchen equipment. I have to, I have to get an idea of what it is, how much it's going to cost. But the generator is committed.
How much? Ray, can we bid that generator ASAP?
What's that?
Can we bid that generator ASAP if it's already funded?
If it's donated, I, you know, I, I have to, listen, I want to.
I think you said the money was donated. I know the generator.
I want to see it now. They're gonna, I'll.
Don't we have to get the building built before we?
Yeah, we don't need the generator. It's not in, you don't have to immediately go out for a generator yet. So.
How much money?
We can't get you to get a bid out. You're always bitching. Now you want to get the generators bid out.
I got a lot.
Kevin, that's a good sign though. You want to get.
I'm sorry, pardon my language, everyone.
I'm not the one delaying, trust me.
Ray, how much money, how much money did you donate? Come on.
Thirty thousand.
All right, we probably need thirty-five, but we'll take it. We'll take it. We'll take it. We're happy. Look.
No, I was told it was going to be a twenty-five or twenty-six. So, uh, but I, I just, we, we have, we'll have the money. So I just need to know what the kitchen number is.
All right, good job.
All right. Is now, is there any other business to, to come?
Yeah, I have one, one thing, Ray.
Go ahead.
Um, so I spoke with, uh, Carl Masaro today, uh, town council chair. And at the Maytown Council, the resolution for the, uh, operation of the Veterans Center is going to come up. And, um, I'm not sure how many on committee right now understand what that board's going to look like, or at least the way it's going to be proposed. But I, I think we need to have a discussion some, uh, sometime between now and then to see if everybody's on board with this, because the last thing we want to do is go before town council and we don't have our own house in order. So I don't know if you want to elaborate on that, Ray, or not.
Well, I think, uh, I, I don't know how many people are familiar with what, what's been proposed. Um, you know, obviously everybody knows that the, uh, VFW, TVO has a, uh, uh, a lease of the property itself, which, uh, probably has another sixty years or so running on the ground lease. And they had a building on there which was, um, funded by the, the TVO. Uh, with the advent of the town getting involved with the financing from the state and the federal government for this, uh, facility, um, it had to be run through the, the town of Trumbull. So we, we've had numerous discussions about how it was going to be operated and so forth. And, um, my suggestion, my suggestion was, and what I submitted to, to Vicky and to Carl Masaro was that we do an arrangement similar to the golf course and that we would do a, um, a Trumbull Veterans Center, um, uh, commission comprised of seven members, four of which came from, uh, were recommend, recommendations from the commanders of the VFW America Legion, two from, um, our first responders and one from the, um, and one from a, uh, an organization such as the, uh, the Rotary Club, for instance. And that their charge would be to run the operations of the building, be responsible for, uh, making sure that it was, the upkeep was taken care of, that a budget was put together that, uh, made it, um, uh, a non-cost to the town of Trumbull. Much like the golf courses. The golf course has an enterprise fund, uh, any, any improvements that are made to the golf course. Any costs incurred by the golf course are paid for by the revenues generated from the golf course. And that's what I envisioned for this facility as well. Um, I, I think we probably, the, uh, the two commanders and some members from the, uh, the, the, uh, this committee should sit down and, and walk that through again, just to make sure everybody is, Steve said, is on the same page. The last thing we want to do is go to a town council meeting proposing such an arrangement and then have people stand up and oppose it. So, um, I, I'm glad you brought it up, Steve. I think it's, it's ripe for discussion. Um, I, I don't think this is, you know, we should do it in the form of a Zoom. I think we should do it offline and then, uh, come to a, a unified conclusion.
I agree with that.
Okay. But, uh, thanks for the information. I think the meeting is going to be May sixth at, uh, at town hall. And I think the proposal is going to be made in that form. Um, so, but I think we should have the, the discussion sometime within the next couple of weeks. All right. Now, is there any other business to come before the committee? All right.
Are we meeting, are we meeting, uh, early April?
Or early April?
Uh, we, we're meeting once a month. We back on track?
Yeah, we, well, uh, unfortunately, I'm, I'm down in Florida, April second through the ninth, which takes us in, if we can possibly move it to the following Wednesday, which would be the sixteenth. Would that be a problem if, uh, if I can't get a room, are we okay doing another Zoom, at least for April?
Sure, okay with me.
Okay, if, if we can't get a room for, is April, first of all, is April sixteenth good for, for everybody?
I, I won't, I may have a problem with it. I'll be, I'm actually flying to South Africa that day.
Okay. They don't have internet service on the plane?
Well, that's why I say May. I don't know yet. I don't exactly know where I'll be at that time at, at, at seven o'clock that evening.
I just want to make sure that we have a quorum if we're going to have a meeting. So, um, does anybody else have a conflict on the sixteenth?
I do. I, uh, running a, um, fundraiser for Rotary and Carnival that week. But I can break out for Zoom or run over there.
Okay, all right, good. So that, we have seven, so that we have, all right, yeah, we'd have, we'd have enough. That's good, Preston. If you could do that, it'd be great. Anyone else? All right, then I'll shoot for a meeting, uh, Steve, on the sixteenth. I'll send out notification. Uh, like I said, if we cannot, if the Zoom seems like it's going to work, uh, at least for you, Preston, right? You're, that's the only way you can do it, right? Okay, so well, in all likelihood, it'll be another Zoom meeting and I'll coordinate that with, uh, with Bill Chin. And, um, if you have any items that you'd like put on the agenda, uh, you know, reach out to me in a personal email. Just let me know what you want put on the agenda. Um, otherwise I'll pretty much follow the same format that I've been doing, uh, right along.
Um, you had suggested, Ray, that, uh, we have an internal discussion about how the building, the actual operating committee would be formed. When would you propose that meeting might take place? Or would that be part of that Zoom meeting?
No, it wouldn't be part of the Zoom meeting. I probably, I, 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 let me get together with, uh, Graham and Ernie. They're going to be the key people here.
Yep.
Uh, and, and a few. But what's that?
I'm here.
I know you are. I saw you.
Okay.
Uh, I'm going to get together with, with Ernie and Graham and, uh, you know, Dan and a few, yourself and a few others. And let's kick, let's kick this around and see where, where it's going. And, uh, you know, then we'll, we'll, uh, hopefully we can do that before the April sixteenth meeting so we can report back to the committee.
Great.
Okay?
Yep.
Yep.
All right. Now, does anybody have anything else? All right. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
We are. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.